Okay, I am going to call the meeting to order this evening. And before we stand, though, I'd like to introduce Troop 295, which you might have recognized, our boy scouts here in the audience, who's going to be earning a merit badge this evening. And we have the scoutmaster, his name is Paul Cast. If you would like to bring your troop forward, Mr. Cast. And they are going to lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. And they're earning a merit badge this evening. And so, welcome to Merriam and earning a badge. And thank you for your assistance in actually providing us guidance in the Pledge of Allegiance. I know it's gonna...
Oh, please rise.
Yes, please rise. Thank you.
Yes, Luke. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you doing that for us. Might not if I turn those on. Okay, the next thing up is public, or the roll call. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, we're not even officially here. We're roll call. Thank you.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy. Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the next item up this evening is what we call public items. And members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. And in accordance with governing body rules and procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal or pertinent or slanderous. I had a sign-up sheet here that was out the side that nobody has signed up for, but that does not preclude you from coming forward at this time. Is there anybody in the audience, sir? Would you come forward and give your name and address for the record? Mr. Clerk.
But of course. My name is Billy Crone, and my address is 6633 Wed Street. On February 24th, I spoke here about the incident that Merriam employees Anna Slocum and Aaron Simmons caused at our community center. The incident drew both national and local attention, as you know. While people had different views, I encouraged all, even those who I disagreed with, to come here and speak at this podium or to the official channels on our city website. Last week, however, a disturbed Ward Four resident retaliated against me, not through debate, but by contacting my HOA board. His goal was to punish me for lowering the barriers to civic participation. And I wish I was joking, but that is what we talked for a while, and that was what he thought I did wrong, was making it too easy for people to use the public contact info about, for our city. In his own words, caught on camera in front of my neighbors, and I'll make clear that he knew I was recording at the time. Daniel Chaveta's own deranged emails that he sent to my neighborhood, he intended, he said in writing, "to act insane and to make me as uncomfortable as legally possible." Those were his words that he sent to my neighborhood and to my HOA board. Chaveta told my HOA that he intended to be annoying to the neighborhood and that he would not play by the rules. He said, and I quote, "that my neighborhood was nearly collateral." He even ranted about Trump at one point and said that he would bring some lovely signs to my neighborhood. Stacy Chaveta, do these yellow, one-sided signs reflect your yellow, one-sided beliefs or just your campaign manager, treasurer, and husband? Because Daniel has mentioned, he mentioned you many times in his written messages to my neighborhood, and you put him on all of your campaign materials that you mailed to my home and put on my door. So you two are very much in the same political boat here in Merriam, and he has done something very annoying and disrespectful to my community. Your campaign was funded, and these plastic little signs were probably funded by donations made to you by Ward Four members before he put the sticker on them in hopes to support you and to support our ward, not to be used against your own constituents. You have betrayed your ward by allowing this to happen, and you lost supporters last week. I hope you know that. Labeling disagreement as extremism is desperate. Going door-to-door and dropping off these leaflets to stir resentment and hatred in your ward is desperate. Sticking signs on private property without the consent of the homeowners is deplorable, and that happened here in Merriam, Kansas, under your watch and your name. I realized Chaveta's rambling emails were more than idle threats when a neighbor called me on Saturday to give me a sign that Daniel had placed in his lawn and ran away without even knocking. If Chaveta had done this to me, I wonder how many other constituents you have harassed into silence? How many of your own campaign signs, the last time you were on a ballot, were fraudulently placed in the yards of people who didn't even know they were there? Democracy is dialogue. Do you remember that? What were you, were you paying attention in 2021 when I applied for this position that you have today? Silencing speech, whether by shackling a Navy veteran for his message or tattling to my HOA board, is immoral, illegal, and ineffective. You will not silence me. You represent me and my neighbors, Stacy. That's what you signed up for. If you don't want to do that anymore, there are plenty of empty seats behind me. It is not your role to change your constituents' minds or to plaster the city with signs, pardon me, with signs maligning them, like this one. And I will not let your husband bully me into being more normal. Also, his words, that's how he put it when he stood before me on Wed Place that Sunday afternoon, wearing his gay rainbow equality shirt and telling me to be more normal. Like, that's an inclusive message. He threatened my neighborhood to come and act insane, and he certainly did. Shame on you both. You've betrayed your office, your oath, this city, and Ward Four with these childish and intolerant actions. Now, to borrow some words from Aaron Simmons, "A good citizen gives options," so I'll give you three. Apologize tonight, after I sit down, not to me, but to the neighborhood and to the community at large for this behavior. Two, you could accept a censure from your fellow councilmen for violating Merriam ethical code, Section 2, 197, subsection 4. Or you can apologize later, after you've resigned. Good night, good luck, and thank you for the dedication and service that you have provided to Merriam in past years before flushing it down the drain with this.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to come forward to speak at this time? Yes, sir, come, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. On February 17th, I was unlawfully arrested at the Merriam Community Center for standing in there with a message, which is a First Amendment-protected activity. And on March 3rd, I filed a lawsuit. And so, I want to read from some of it here this evening. In the United States District Court for District of Kansas, Justin Spees versus the City of Merriam, Kansas, Anna Slocum in her individual capacity, Aaron Simmons in his individual capacity, Devin Allen in his individual capacity, John Kisthart in his individual capacity. Comes now the plaintiff, Justin Spees, by and through counsel, Lennis L. Baker, and for his complaint against each defendant hereby states as follows. "The complaint begins and ends at each of the defendant's failure to recognize the difference between private and public property. In this lawsuit, the defendants viewed the publicly-owned Merriam Community Center literally as a private business in which it could demand, for any reason, that an individual be told to leave. Of all entities in the universe, the ACLU did not like the message Dr. Justin Spees presented at an ACLU Town Hall meeting so much that it urged the Parks and Recreation Director, Anna Slocum, to eject Dr. Spees from the hallway of the center, even though Dr. Spees was simply reporting on the event, filming, and possessing a message the ACLU disapproved of. That message was abortion is child murder, clear as day. Director Slocum took the ACLU up on its demand and had Dr. Spees arrested and removed from the community center on February 17th, 2025." So I'm just going to read from some of the, some of the causes of action, and I'll just read until the time runs out here. So I'm going to start here on the second cause of action. Unlawful, wrongful detention. Dr. Spees was arrested on February 17th, 2025, at the center by the defendants Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen. There was no probable cause to arrest Dr. Spees because it was not reasonable to believe that the center was a private business or that the center was not a public building or that the hallways of the center were not a public forum. Which it is, that hallway is a public forum. There was no probable cause to believe Dr. Spees was causing a ruckus, as Simmons said, because the defendant officers personally witnessed Dr. Spees' calm and demure behavior, as well as the security camera footage was available to verify that Dr. Spees caused no disruption to the town hall meeting and did not cause any disorderly conduct in the hallway. Security footage that none of the officers bothered to take a look at. The third cause of action is retaliation, retaliatory arrest and retaliatory detention for exercise of protected speech. Plaintiff Dr. Spees was engaged in a constitutionally-protected activity at the time of his arrest and detention. Defendant Slocum, Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen's actions against the defendant would chill a person of ordinary firmness from continuing to engage in the protected activity, and his protected activity was a substantial or motivating factor in Slocum, Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen's decision to arrest, detain, and remove Dr. Spees from the center in handcuffs. Defendant Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen repeatedly retaliated against Dr. Spees for his presence, reporting, and messaging. Dr. Spees wasn't breaching the peace or doing anything constituting disorderly conduct when Dr. Spees came onto the center premises or when Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen viewed Dr. Spees. Each defendant was, quote, "motivated by improper considerations, such as the desire to prevent the exercise of a constitutional right." Defendant Slocum, Simmons, Kisthart, and Allen singled out Dr. Spees because he was reporting on the town hall and possessed messaging that made them and the town hall participants uncomfortable. Quote, "Singling out one individual banning his pref- disavowed speech and essentially preventing him from engaging in a form of civil discourse that is available to everyone is unreasonable." Each defendant further ratified those decisions by failing to meaningfully investigate and punish the unconstitutional conduct. So they didn't ask to look at the security camera footage. They didn't bother to ask, I have the whole thing recorded. It's on my YouTube channel. You can check it out, start to finish. Didn't bother to ask me, even though Allen acknowledged that I was recording. So they were well aware that there was plenty of evidence out there to show exactly what happened. And Slocum, in the body cam, actually tells Simmons that I had gone into the meeting room. It's a complete lie. It's part of, it's part of this. It's all these lies that were made up to have me unlawfully arrested. So I never went into the meeting room. I stood in the hallway the whole time. So it makes the whole thing so unfortunate. So, "An inference of policy or custom may be drawn from a failure to take remedial action against, after a constitutional violation. Defendant City of Merriam had a policy or custom of viewpoint discrimination from the failure of the police departments or the defendant's supervisors to take any remedial steps after the violation. At the time of the arrest, Dr. Spees was engaged in a constitutionally-protected activity. Defendant officers knew the plaintiff's conduct did not violate Kansas state law. Defendant officers knew the plaintiff's conduct was affirmatively protected by federal law." I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Spees. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, I see no one coming forward to the podium, so I will close out the public comment portion of this uni and move on to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda, considered separately. We do have two items this evening. Does anyone want any of the items removed? Okay, I see nobody want anything removed. I would entertain a motion for that. Oh, okay. Mr. Silvers, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve Consent Agenda items number one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Silvers. Do I have a second? Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is the Mayor's Report, and we have a proclamation this evening, which I would like to read at this time. And this is, "Whereas Women's History Month is an annual celebration of the history and accomplishments of women across the world and acknowledges their courage and struggle to attain the same basic human rights as men that still proceeds to this day. And whereas American women of all races and ethnicities fought to not only secure their own suffrage rights and equal opportunity, but also for others in the abolitionist movements, labor rights, voting, and silver rights, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, the Women's History Month theme for 2025 is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations. And it celebrates the influence and strength of women who have dedicated their lives to leadership, education, and mentorship. And whereas, the City of Merriam recognizes women throughout our community who have been instrumental in passing down their history and heritage to communicate the lessons of those who came before us as these stories expand our understanding and strengthen our connections with each other. Now therefore, in recognition and honor of the brave, accomplished, and influential women who told and continue to tell their stories, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby reclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month, proclaimed on this 10th day of March 2025." I'd say, let's give all women a round of applause. Thank you. And I would just go on to say that I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for a woman. So, my mom. Thank you, Mom. So, okay, other things. We have a Merriam Police Officer of the Year. We have Chief McGlaughlin coming to the podium. Can you tell us a little bit about that individual, I assume?
If I have to stand up here, you have to stand up here. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the 2024 Police Officer of the Year. Before I go into the reasons why he was made Officer of the Year, I want to point out to you that our process for selecting the Officer of the Year does not come through my office or the captains and the major. Actually, this honor is bestowed upon the individual by their peers. They're nominated by their peers, and then a group of committees formed, and that committee go ahead and selects the individual based on the nomination. So, uh, uh, excuse me. Master Police Officer Brandon Bates is a dedicated five-year veteran in Merriam Police Department. He has distinguished himself as both a leader and an educator. He is an instructor in multiple disciplines, including defensive tactics, handcuffing, baton, and de-escalation. Makes great, takes great pride in training and mentoring his colleagues. As one of our two detectives, he has played a crucial role in addressing retail crime in Merriam. He has sought additional training, expanded his knowledge, and built key networking connections to tackle this issue effectively. He's actually put together part of a task force in Johnson County that is focusing on retail crime, like at the town center and such. And he's actually put together some programs everyone started implementing this summer to start catching some more people in the act. Beyond his investigative work, he also committed to officer wellness. He created a database for free workout programs for department personnel and leads by example through his fitness and range scores. We are grateful for his dedication, leadership, service to our community. Congratulations, Master Police Officer Bates. You actually get to keep it. I gave it to him at our annual meeting, then I took it back and said... Oh, you gotta get it off the big camera. You don't say anything?
No.
Okay. I tried.
Thank you, Officer Bates. Okay, next item up for the Mayor's Report. I always like to say a little bit about what's gone on with our council and myself over the last couple of weeks. Our council president and vice president met with Mr. Engel to develop tonight's agenda. I and several staff met with the Johnson County Appraisers Office or individuals to discuss what happened with our appraisals in Merriam and how we compare to other cities in 2024. They say that affordable housing is anything less than $300,000, just for the record. And they told us we still have a shortage of housing. They anticipate more apartments to be built. So, that's kind of the gist of it. The numbers will be in a packet, and we'll get that information out to everyone later as to what those percentages are. Okay, let's see. I think, and then when a council member attended the opening night of the Tim Murphy Art Gallery, a council member attended the employee appreciation luncheon. Several council members attended the Single Trash Holler Committee Meeting. I think we call that something else, but they have been busy, and all of the thought that's gone into that group is put in as much appreciated. We want to make sure that something of this magnitude is the right thing for us to undertake, and I think we're going to get an update on that a little bit later this evening. And the last thing I have, now this is probably the most important part of my whole speech this evening, is that today, I went out and officially filed for reelection as your mayor. So, I, people have been asking me that, and I had not made that commitment, and I just thought it was time that I do so. So, I have officially filed, and I'm very honored to have served three years. Got at least one year, no matter what, left. But hopefully, I'll get reelected and get to serve you some more. Honored to do that. So, I have nothing else for the Mayor's Report. Looks like the big item this evening, though, is our council items, and that's the City of Merriam's annual report. We have Mr. Engel, our city administrators, come to the podium. Put this up here. All right. Are you going to change that, or I'm going to change that? All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Happy to be in front of you tonight to share our annual report. This is something that's a little new, a little bit what we've done in the past. We're just going to present it in more of a comprehensive manner. What we've done in the past, we've always presented a lot of this data, a lot of this information, but we kind of spread it across several months. Some of this comes up during the budget process. Some of this information is part of the budget book. At the conclusion of, I think, one of the last one of these reports last year, Assistant City Administrator Caitlin Gard pointed out, "Why don't we do all this at once? It would seem to make way more sense to do it at once." And we said, "That's a brilliant idea. I don't know why we don't do it that. Let's, we're going to aim for that next year." So, appreciate her idea and really the efforts of her staff. This is really a big lift on the communications staff to put all this together in a meaningful and appealing way, because a lot of it can be dry. But also, I want to thank our department heads and the folks that oversee the functional areas that we're going to report on tonight, because they have to come up with all that information, and they have to get up here, and they have to share those good deeds with you and the public. So I want to thank them also. I'm not going to cover a whole, I think I've got the first five or six slides. A lot of it's just what we would call an executive summary that'll actually be covered in further items down the road. So I don't want to steal the thunder of any of the staff that's going to get up here and do it. I do want to cover just one particular slide, and that's our values. Want to point out, remind everybody that we are a values-driven organization. We are values, we call them our Team Merriam values, because clearly, we're Team Merriam. But they're also, they were created by our staff. These were not values that I came up with. These are not values that our department heads came up with. For a little sense of history, about seven years ago, three citizen satisfaction surveys ago, we had put a lot of work into the previous three years to try to move the needle on that. And so, when we got the results, about seven years ago, we thought, wow, we actually set the bar at a lot of metro and national metrics. And we were very pleased to see all of that, but we actually got scared, too. We said, "Man, we have to duplicate this every three years when the survey comes out. How are we going to do that? What's, what's our, we talked about, what's our secret sauce?" You know, there were things that we talked about internally and had for years about Team Merriam, and that doesn't ascribe to our values, and that's not our way, and things like that. But we had never really academically, I guess, if you will, defined what our recipe was, what was our secret sauce? What are the things that we actually do that set us apart? What were the things that flowed through all of the good deeds that we did that actually made them recognizable to our residents? And so, we tasked all of the departments at the staff level to come up with several representatives, and they all got together, all of the different departments, and we gave them a year and the resources that they needed, whether that was somebody to talk to them or whether that was for them to do a field trip or it was just for them to have lunch so they could do a working meeting to talk about, again, what's the recipe, what's our secret sauce? What do we want to hold each other accountable to above and beyond our policies? Policies are great. Here's what happens when you're not on time to work, but why is it important that you are on time to work? We don't sometimes put those things in policies. That's what we kind of drilled down to our values. And so, our staff came up with our values, service accountability, leadership, teamwork, excellence, dedication. And they defined them and actually gave examples of them. There's a lot more information than this in our internal doc, working document for our values, but it's something I'm very proud of. It's something that I think, all of what you're going to see tonight, all of the good deeds, all of the successes, and even some of the failures, they all, these values flow through all of them. And again, they are the Team Merriam values. So I'm very, very proud that we keep these in front of us and continue to aspire to all of them, whether it's our impression system that we put out where we actually recognize in our coworkers these values, individual or collective, and we celebrate those. So, again, team values. Think it's important that we put these out in front of the council and the public so they understand that we actually do have a values north star, if you will, that guides all the good work that we do for the council and for the residents. So, that being said, I'm going to pass over a couple of these items that we will revisit and start with administration. We're going to hand it off to Caitlin Gard. The way that we envision this going, we have about 100 slides. Everybody's going to take no more than five minutes, we've been told. It might all average out to five minutes. Some might go a little bit longer, some might go a little bit shorter. But at the end of each one of these, what we call functional areas, feel free for council to ask questions about any of the materials that you see here. We want to make sure that we explain ourselves to you and leave you with a feeling of the good deeds that we've done here. Is that fair? Makes sense? Okay, we're going to start our program. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Engel.
All right, I've got administration for you all tonight. And I do want to just reiterate what City Administrator Ingel said about the hard work that everybody put into this. We've been working on this for, what, seven, eight weeks now since the end of 2024. And so, just kudos to the staff that worked on this, the marketing and communications team, and then also the department heads as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions as I'm standing up here. The administration department is really kind of a catch-all. Obviously, we support you all in your governing abilities, but also are really the front desks staff and probably the first contact to the community with our city clerk and our administrative staff. Obviously, we also do any of the hiring with human resources. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Municipal court as well. Something that people don't really think about a lot with administration is the literal technical support. Now that we're all techie and have all fancy gadgets, we have one staff member that handles our technology across all of the city, including supporting the police department and their vehicles as well, and so does a fantastic job. Obviously, our communications. Jenna's going to come give up some information about that in a little bit, and then our tourism and economic development, which Karen's going to cover as well. Obviously, our two large projects in 2024 Obviously, our two large projects in 2024 are really our most visible projects as well, with Marion Grand Station and the undergrounding of utilities. We understand that traffic has been a nightmare of late, but hopefully, that'll be wrapped up here by July of 2025. Information about Marion Grand Station is on the website. I know Drake Development is putting out a lot of information as well, when things are gonna open and what the next steps are for that. It's almost 10, we're 10 days away from our one-year anniversary of opening the Marion Plaza Library, which has been a very successful endeavor down near the community center. We partnered with the library to move them, as you all know, from the Antioch branch that we just recently purchased, down to the Marion Plaza down below. Also, I know we talk about it all of the time, but one of the city council goals is to have the highest quality level of service to the community. I don't think anything speaks louder to that than the results we get from our ETC community survey. That was in 2024. I know it seems like forever ago, but at the beginning of last year, we got fantastic results back for not just administration, but, and not only you all, but everything we do in our community. In addition to that, supporting a few other council goals, obviously, our single trash hauler. I'm gonna give an update about that later in the evening. However, we do continue to work through that process and what that's gonna look like for the future of Marion. And then supporting our public art program as well. Last year, I think you all, you all did support purchasing, participating in the Parade of Hearts program, and then ultimately, purchasing a heart that lives down at the Marion Marketplace. We welcomed Councilmember Cozmeier. He took the oath of office back in October, so we're very happy to have you. In addition to that, City Administrator Engel mentioned Team Marion and how that important that is. And nothing in this entire presentation or this annual report would be, we wouldn't be able to do it without the great people that we hire and all of Team Marion. So we wanted to make sure that we pointed out some of our HR statistics, including almost 10 years of average service for all of our employees. In addition to that, we implemented two new programs last year, kind of for Team Marion. Well, really, we expanded our wellness program to have 48 employees participate in our wellness program. That was up significantly from the year before. And then our new language type that you all approved last year. We had four employees take advantage of that. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Megan. You'll see me again here in a minute, too.
Any questions, Ms. Gard?
Have any questions?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thrilled to be here again. So as you're all aware, I am the new Finance Director. We have two other individuals that are part of the finance team, an accountant and an accounting clerk. Mike and Sherry are absolutely amazing, not only people, but employees, and I wouldn't be able to do my job without them. So a lot of what I'm gonna talk to you about, it's on here because of them. I wouldn't have any numbers to present without that team. So here are some of the big finance highlights for the past fiscal year. Just a reminder that anything I talk about is unaudited, so don't hold me to this. If the auditors come here in a couple of months and say something looks a little different, that is their job. But we will give you a report when that comes out as well. So as you're all aware, we have one of the lowest sales tax rates in the city of Marion and Johnson County, which is amazing. We also have one of the highest bond ratings. We do have one series of bonds that are gonna be falling off in 2027. We're still making payments on those, and everything is looking great there. And then property valuations, we did go over that today. It does look like we will see some positive trends there for the next year, too. So we'll talk a little bit more about that during budgeting, but no reason for concern looking forward, which is nice. So like I said, I think it was a couple of council meetings ago, for fiscal year '24, we did see a deficit of about $4 million when it comes to what was budgeted versus what was expended. But that's okay, because it was planned. You guys asked for staff to go forward and do certain capital improvements, and those were done, and they were done very well, from what I can tell. And some of them were even under budget, so some are still in progress as well. But obviously, it's fine to overspend, as long as it's something that you were prepared for. So thankfully, we're very financially healthy, and we have that ability. But our cash investment and investments, we keep about those percentages at all times. We keep cash on hand to pay for things like payroll and different accounts payable types of things and receivables that come in. And then we invest the rest, so that while it's not being used, it's not just sitting in a bank not doing anything. If anyone ever wants to look at any of those investments, I'm happy to provide that. And then, like I said, we have the two outstanding obligations. We're paying against those, and I think we're definitely, I'll show here in a second, that we're seeing that those investments are paying off. When it comes to revenues for fiscal year '24, they did come in slightly under budget, but not by much. And what's important is we saw that a lot of the bigger items, like sales tax, which is in front of you, did come in a little over budget. So property taxes came in a little under. That one's really hard to predict, about 98% of the budget. But then everything else came in slightly over, which is great. We do have an overperforming revenue source that is the Marion Community Center. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago. You also see on the next slide that their expenditures came in under budget. So I would like to say that while that is one of our bonds that we have out, one of our debt obligations, clearly is paying off, and the community is using it. It's coming in over budget. But then also, the staff is being really financially smart and using their budget well, and I think being good fiscal stewards. So when it comes to expenditures, like I said, we did obviously have a deficit. We overspent our revenues, but that was planned. The great thing is that we actually, on the general fund, came in 96% of our budget. So we spent less than what was anticipated to be spent, which I think is always a great thing. We do have a couple of significant expense categories, mostly personnel and utilities. And then, like I said, there, you can see that number that the Marion Community Center came in at 96% of their budgets. And not only did they well overshoot their revenues, but then they came in 4% below their budget. And then just a few key observations. So revenue growth, we just keep seeing everything tick up. All the economic indicators are showing that, should be able to keep tracking that, especially as we're moving into budgeting for fiscal year '26, which is a great place to be, even with property taxes and everything. I hope that the community center keeps doing what it's doing right now, because that will look great for us financially, and it'll allow them to either look at infrastructure ideas or maybe some more programs and those types of things. We did have a few notable capital investments, which are listed there below, which, again, everything was planned and budgeted for, so nothing too crazy came up. And that is all I have for you tonight. Any questions on finance?
Any questions for the Director of Board?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Me again. A function of administration that we really don't talk about a whole lot, but really is impactful to our community, is our municipal court. We just have a few statistics here. We did hold 92 court sessions last year with a total of 21 trials, 226 different court requested documents. We have three, two and a half, members of our court staff, and so they handle a whole lot of cases here, as you can see. As far as financials, we got about $822,000 of gross revenue. We do pay the prosecutor and the judge, so our total city revenue was about $713,000. Something that's super great about that is more people are paying that online, which makes it easier and less burdensome on our staff. This is the fun slide. We get to talk about the top charges from most offensive down to least offensive. And you can see our top charges here for criminal, misdemeanor traffic offenses, and traffic infractions, including 135 DUI charges in 2024. With that, any questions on municipal court?
Any questions for Ms. Gard? Okay, good job. Jenna, come into the podium.
Hello, how are you? We had an exciting year in communications this year. We reengaged the marketing team and started social media meetings with many different departments to level up our online presence and work cohesively together on our larger projects. We also started our Tiny Mike series on Instagram reels, which our community looks forward to as we highlight our staff. You can find all the exciting things we're doing on the city's website, E- Marion Highlights Magazine and our social media platforms, including Nextdoor, LinkedIn, Instagram, and Facebook. We saw a 48% increase on Facebook followers from 2023 to 2024, and an 19% increase on Instagram followers, thanks to a few viral videos that we did. And most of those videos are from our public work videos. They tend to do really well on social media. These were our top few performing posts from last year. You may recall the sinkhole on Knox. It made for some really great visuals. And with that, I do want to say how much I appreciate the support of all our other departments when it comes to sending me photos for weather-related events, parks programming, and police events. The partnership really does help when, how we communicate to our residents in a timely manner. We received nine communication awards for 2024 for various projects. Two of those awards were for our Highlights and Recreation Magazine, and two were for the Storybook Relay we did in partnership with the Johnson County Library. We are also thrilled to note that we started translating our Highlights and Recreation Magazine and our visitors, a community and visitor guide, into Spanish and offering it digitally on our platforms. We know that this will help our Spanish-speaking residents to know what's happening in Marion. And looking forward, we're planning Marion's Big 75th Bash for this year, so I want you guys to save the date for October 23rd. From 4 to 8, it's gonna be at Marion Marketplace. You can visit merion.org/75 to learn about all the fun stuff that we have planned coming up and to shop for new Marion merch with our 75th birthday logo. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, you have to answer a question.
Go ahead.
I'm always so disappointed when I see the E- Marion subscriber numbers for years, Ben, because it seems like it really puts everything in one place, and it's easy to get to. Does it feel like people are really reading it, they get it? Can you tell?
It's slowly creeping up. Like every year, there still seems to be a handful of people. I know based on our community survey, most people say they do get it from our Highlights Magazine, but I think that is a good way, maybe that's something I can start promoting a little bit more on social media and maybe our next Highlights Magazine.
I've been talking about it for so long, and it doesn't seem to catch.
Mr. Call, go ahead.
Do we know how much our Spanish publications are being used?
We actually just checked, because we were trying to, we might be switching off of issue. And we had 348, I believe, views within the last, since we put out our last Highlights issue, so within the last three months for our last issue. So I think it's getting used pretty well, and I'm glad it's at least another thing, tool in the show that we can use to help our residents.
Any other questions, Ms. Gay?
No. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Karen Crane. I am the Tourism and Economic Development Manager. Thanks for allowing me to present to you this evening. We are the welcome wagon to Marion. We're here to impact the economic well-being of our community through welcoming businesses and visitors to our community. Ways that we do that vary greatly, but some of our successes from last year, I want to talk about the Quality Inn renovations as offered through our Marion Hotel Grant Program. If any of you have driven past the Quality Inn, or if you haven't, please do. It underwent a massive renovation, and per Alex Patel, the hotel manager, he is very grateful to the council and the city of Marion for offering this program. As Jenna mentioned, we did offer a dual-language visitor guide for the first time in 2024. Regarding, I know that you had asked about impressions on the Highlights Magazine for that. Regarding the visitor guide, last year's impressions on the Spanish version were 2,402 with an average read time of 2 minutes and 40 seconds. The English version, which is also in print, however, garnered 3,547 impressions with an average read time of 3 minutes and 18 seconds. So I feel like they're performing quite well on the online platform. For those of you that are aware of the Walker School and all of the things going on there, they were able to be nominated for the Kansas Registry of Historic Places and receive that nomination and designation in 2024. We did provide staff assistance and letters of support to endorse that nomination, and they are also seeking a national designation now. We also provide staff assistance and support to the Downtown Marion Partnership through local events and things that they're hosting. We try to host a city booth and be present at most of their functions and events. The Shop Marion program has been a pretty successful program. It's an opportunity for our merchants to offer a small discount program for our residents and visitors. We currently have 24 offers on the site, and it grows every time we get new businesses into our community. Speaking of new businesses, we welcomed 40 new businesses last year in Marion with 213 new employees. We do go out and say hello to our businesses quarterly. And last year, Caitlin, thank you for going along. We do go and say hi to our business owners, just to let them know we are appreciative of them being in our community. We visited with 34 new and renewing businesses in Marion last year. And we also nominated local businesses for regional and state awards. The Visitor Guide, speaking of awards, also received Best Visitor Guide Medium Budget at the State Tourism Conference in October last year. We host numerous events for our businesses. This year, we're hosting another event, but last year, we hosted our Business Appreciation Happy Hour, where we shared the results of our 2024 business survey. I think most of you have seen those results, which are on the website, but I just want to reiterate that 85% of our businesses who took the survey ranked Marion as good or excellent as a place to do business. We launched a new art tour on the Autocast app, and I hope that all of you will be able to go download that free app and go explore Marion's art both digitally and in person. That concludes my report. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Green?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We've got Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Mayor, Council, Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. And I, doing the community development portion of this, and a lot of stats and graphs are in your pockets. I'm gonna hit some highlights there. Starting off with code enforcement stats, had a little bit of fewer code enforcement things to pursue last year, but again, chind along the same kind of the normal numbers we usually have. This is an interesting stat in that issued the smallest, the least number of landlord licenses post-pandemic. We only listed 473 landlord licenses. That's definitely a drop down from what we normally see, particularly after the pandemic. The number there, the number of permits issued, 748. I point that out because that is the highest number we've had ever recorded. The closest we came previously was 2019. We had 582 permits. What this stemmed from is there was a hailstorm last spring, and with that, a lot of roofing permits were issued. Nancy Yokum and Jasmine Bustos, the folks who run the front office, deserve a lot of kudos. Takes a lot of time and energy to vet all the roofers, as all of our contractors that come in to the city of Marion, make sure they have their correct qualifications to work within the city. But yeah, 748 was, that's a massive number. Again, you can see it here with the graphs. Neighborhood grants, this is the opportunity that the city gives to help and assist our neighbors, neighborhoods, in doing some beautifications and improvements. See a map there, shows all the locations of the grants that happen throughout the city. Again, good dispersment throughout the entire city. Block parties, kind of the same numbers, typical what we normally see. Neighborhood islands, this is something that is administered by Public Works. Again, that's a program where a neighbor, a person can essentially spruce up, improve a neighborhood island, one that sits in the right of way. And the city will reimburse them for a certain level of material and things they use for that. Here's a great example over in Forest Park on Masson Drive, between a before and after of someone who took advantage of that program. Our 2024 Assistance Grant, this is an opportunity to assist those folks that are most in need. A big one I want to point out here is residential city property taxes. This is where we rebate our portion of the property tax to folks who are income-qualified. That is a big program, really get a lot of support from that. Folks are excited to be participating in that, as they are with all of these programs. We had 63 households. We rebated approximately $42,000, which comes to an average of about $660 per household. We also work with Johnson County, provide rental assistance, utility assistance. Johnson County administers those programs. We provide funding to them. You can see the location of our Assistance Grant programs. These are the ones that the city administers throughout the city. Again, with the franchise fee rebate, fee rebate, as well as the next slide, you can see a little tick up in 2022. That's a result of us, this council modifying, changing our income guidelines. Driveway repair and replacement, that's again, income-eligible individuals. City may replace or repair their driveway. Again, that number really flexuates on the number of driveways you do, based upon the size of the driveway. Residential grants, this is our residential sustainability grants. These are the grants that you're all very familiar with, kind of the first ones we started. We had 71 homes in the program this year, reimbursed $170,000. Total funds or total projects that we leveraged is $828,000, which is a really cool stat when you go, for every $1 that the city had in grants, it leveraged $4.86 worth of improvements. Again, example of, excuse me, a map showing the sustainability and exterior improvement grants. Again, wide dispersal throughout the city. Residential exterior grant program continues to go do kind of typical numbers that we usually see. And then the biggest thing that folks did was roof sightings, painting windows, again, typical exterior grants. Residential sustainability, we continue to see continual growth in that. Every year, we had an uptick in the number of folks participating in that. Again, primary thing that folks are looking to do are windows and HVAC systems. Here's an example of somebody participating in our residential exterior grant program, before and after picture. And then the last slide I have, and this is the first time I've been able to report to you, that we had three businesses participate in our downtown exterior grant program, reimbursed about just under $6,000. Total improvements that occurred based upon that grant was short of $58,000. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Dyer? I see no questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got Chief McGlaughlin coming up.
Good evening. Marion Police Department, we're a community-oriented policing department. We thrive on that. I make that a point anytime I talk to the community, to our officers. I made a big deal about that at our annual meeting with our officers. I believe it's the core function of our police department. There's some examples of us in our community-oriented policing. We attended more than 45 community events last year. They include station tours, family community events, recycling event. In December, we started what we're calling Noel, Northeast Elves, where we had officers and donations to the community to help some underprivileged families celebrate Christmas. Some more examples of our community engagement. The one on the right, we go to the schools on motivational Mondays at Crestview and Hi-Fi Fridays at Marion Park. Kids love it. The officers love it. Even our civilian staff gets involved and goes down there and interacts with the kids. I have crime statistics, since we're the police department. As you can see, most of our important crime statistics, property crimes, crimes against society, persons' crimes, we all saw a reduction last year in those areas. Calls for service. Calls for service, 9400, self-initiated calls, which is stuff like traffic stops, business checks, those type of things the officers do on a day-to-day basis, write about 10,800. Reports taken, about 3,800, and 852 arrests, pretty consistent across the board over the last few years. Number since, sir, this is for our mental health co-responder unit. I like to put this up just to see what the co-responders are doing in our community. They're, we love having our co-responders, and they do a lot of good work. They responded 238 911 calls with the officers, diverted 28 patients from the ER, diverted six from going to jail, did 322 follow-ups, went to 63 outreach contacts, that's where they go out after a crisis incident, check up and see how they're doing, make sure that they're getting the services that they need. 347 other co-responder contacts, that bottom number down there is prior, 357, not 3,000 reports, we didn't even take that many reports last year. It's typo on my part. And crisis line utilized by LEO, 120, that's where we don't have a co-responder present, but we call the Johnson County hotline and try to get services for the person that way. Again, top five accident locations, Shawnee Mission Parkway is the winner, Johnson Drive, Antioch Road, 67th, 75th. The top five don't usually change by name, they just all, they vie for which position they're going to be in which particular year. Those are busiest thoroughfares, so having the most accidents on those is expected, just with the amount of traffic that we have on those.
Is I-35 the common component through all of them?
Well, yes and no. I mean, that is definitely a huge component, but Shawnee Mission Parkway, 67th Street, 75th, Johnson Drive, those are all east-west arteries that feed east Johnson County with west Johnson County, so, but I-35 is definitely the connection point where all those traffic points are merging, so it's definitely a cause. But we didn't even list the accidents on I-35 because KHP runs most of those for us. Any other questions?
Questions for Chief McGlaughlin? Okay, I see none, sir.
Thank you.
We've got Chief Long coming to the podium.
Alan Long, Overland Park Fire Department. Obviously, there's a contracted fire emergency services through the city of Overland Park and the Merriam City. That was started in 2015, was set to expire at the end of last year, was renewed for a 20-year term, starting in January of this year. Couple statistics here, commercial dollar loss, 702,000, that is the equivalent of the value of one 7-Eleven on Antioch, so arrival, well-advanced fire went defensive upon arrival, so that equates to that. Residential dollar loss or value saved, 97.15 per contents and estimated property value on the fires that occurred in the city of Merriam. To kind of break that down, we actually had 360-some fire, or what we'd call fire responses, but to report on them through the INFERS, the National Reporting Criteria, certain fires have to meet these criteria to be reportable as actual fire, so we arrived and something was on fire. So on the building fires category, just to give a little information, for a building to be counted actually as a fire, so multifamily dwelling, one or two-family dwelling, or commercial, kind of all lumped into one, structural components have to be on fire. If we show up to a house and someone has a smoking electrical outlet, that's not considered a building fire, that's an electrical arcing, so we don't, we try to really kind of discern and separate what an actual fire is from other things. But we did have some fires, some cooking containers, some outside rubbish fires, the three different types of grass or brush fires really depend on where they're at and what's involved. So if it's actual grass fire at someone's lawn, if it's brash grush fires, typically those are out near the highway, non-cared-for plots of land type things, then natural visitation other. So we had some dumpster fires and some other trash fires to report as well. And then Fire Department statistics, so 279 inspections performed, 94% fire code violations corrected. We will work to get that to 100%. We usually give some time for the occupants or the management company to get those corrected, and then we can move into a fine structure, what we found over the last several years, depending on what the system is, if suppression system or alarm system, it takes a little bit to get those parts, so we'll continue to work with them, educate them, and work them through the process before we resort to a finding-type structure. So 264 burn permits issued, our call volume for the city of Merriam was just under 1,900 calls, and 80% of those are EMS in nature. To give you a little bit of perspective, we ran over 25,000 calls for, in totality, for the area that we cover, which is about 122 square miles between Merriam, city of Overland Park, and unincorporated Johnson County, which is the other end of our contract area. So we'll run from county line all the way into Miami County in our coverage area. And then a couple things here, we actually started a program that was new last year, which is open houses during the Fire Prevention Week, which is in October, so that's Risk Manager Shayna Hurst there that had the Merriam Open House, and then that's Angela and crew for EMS Week, the EMS Week proclamation here in Merriam down below. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Chief Long? Okay, I guess I see no questions. Thank you, Chief. Director Sol coming up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As always, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to share what the department has done, and I'm excited to report on the success of the department. In 2024, we added one new face, and that is Chloe Holmes, our fitness coordinator. This is all of our full-time staff minus one, Albert wasn't available that day, but obviously, it takes a crew of staff to do what we do, so thankfully, we have approximately 100 part-time staff that help us to support our mission in serving the community of Merriam. There were lots of memories made this year as we continue to build community, and we marked this year with our inaugural Military Tribute Banner. We had seven banners purchased in 2024. If you miss these, these will be on Merriam Drive from 57th Street to Hocker in 2025, and they will go up Memorial Day through July, beginning of August, they come down. It is also important for us to maintain our Turkey Creek Streamway Trail, parks and playgrounds, they continue to be a priority. So one of the things that we worked on in 2024 with the help of Public Works, we don't personally take care of the maintenance ourselves, was we put new bollards out so that people can clearly see that they shouldn't be driving in places that we don't want them to be driving. Outdoor rentals provide amenities to the community to host family reunions, graduations, and secure practices for fields. So these are the, we have two shelters, one at Chat Lane and one at Brown Park, obviously the Merriam Marketplace, and then there are two soccer fields at Julius McFarlane Fields that we rent throughout the year. Participation in events is an indication of the success of the programs, so we're going to dive into these numbers a little bit more and see what makes up these categories. There are many special events throughout the year. Staff does a tremendous job in planning and implementing these events, but Mother Nature, of course, was always a factor. 2024, for example, Turkey Creek Festival was an extremely warm day, and we saw our participation drop specifically in the afternoon that day because of that. July Family Fun Friday was again, another very warm day, and it's hard to come out sometimes when it's hot outside, as well as the Second Cruise Night in August. We will continue to run these events in 2025 and hope that Mother Nature is maybe a little bit more forgiving this year. Excuse me. Program participation experienced growth in all categories, we're very excited about this. Having a consistent fitness coordinator has helped with our program growth in water fitness and adult land, but staff has, overall, staff has done a tremendous job in trying to grow programs as well as promote the existing programs that we have. So something that we'd like to show is that membership visitation grew 49% in 2024, water fitness participation was 33%, growth in youth programs was 30%, adult was 12, rentals grew 10, and 50-plus grew 5%. We're excited to see what that does in 2025. In celebrating four years of operation, staff works hard to find ways to improve the aesthetics of what we have. Sorry, skipped that one. Sometimes they're very visible, other times they're not so visible. Some of the easier improvements were like the new equipment that we added to the fitness floor. Things that people might not have seen was the stabilization to the art gallery walls for safety, new signage for rules, and improved communication with our patrons, as well as just a fresh coat of paint every so often, makes a huge difference to what we do. We would be remiss if we didn't mention the volunteers that help us with all of our events. We have volunteers that are loyal to a specific event, and we have volunteers that are just loyal to the department as a whole. When the call is placed, they're more than willing to step up and help, but it is not possible to do what we do without these volunteers, and we're very grateful for them. It takes, it's a huge responsibility that staff takes and recognizes that the citizens entrusted us with the approval of the quarter cent sales tax for the construction of the community center, and we take this responsibility very seriously. While the economy of the day is much different than what it was in 2017, it is staff's goal to maximize recreation benefits for the community. Revenues increased 14% in 2024, membership growth was 11%, rental growth was 16%, and program growth was 24%. Of course, we have to have expenditures to go along with those revenues, and as program expansion occurs, so do expenses that incurs, and you know, we have to have more staff in the building, we have more expenses with the programs for supplies and instructors. We do our best to manage those expenses to stay under budget and offset so that we're not spending every penny of revenue in the expenses that are incurred. So this slide kind of shows where we ended as a subsidy to our residents. We still continue to work very hard to improve this cost recovery. As with all services, there is a cost to our citizens, and we can't expect us to 100% cover our expenses, as we do a lot in the community for free in hosting our partners for different events. But with all services, we'd like to kind of break it down and figure out what the cost was. So with approximately 10,875 residents, this is about $79.80 per resident for the year, which equates to about 22 cents a day to have that beautiful facility down there. With 236,323 visitors, that is about a subsidy of $3.67 per visit. That's an improvement of 30 cents over last year overall. With all of our open spaces, we'd like to make sure that everybody understands what we have to offer, and while we are compact in our open space, they do pack a punch with a variety that they offer, and staff felt what a better way to help encourage residents to rediscover these spaces than to offer this Fall in Love with Parks campaign, which was a huge success in 2024. The farmer's market continues to be a well-loved program. This in 2024 was our first-ever Kids Makers Mark, and it was an opportunity to have our youngest citizens explore entrepreneurship, and it was a tremendous success. Look for it again in 2025, as a matter of fact. Children activities and monthly music provided a great mix of entertainment for the people that attended the market. One of the successes is we're starting to see more vendors come to us again, and that might have something to do with things that are going on in our neighboring communities. We'll see what happens this year. Before I turn it over to Celia, I'd just like to add that our staff is excited with the growth of 2024. We're excited about the challenge to continue to develop programs and opportunities to ensure the, to ensure the excess, the success that we've experienced so far, and hope to see that success in continued years to come. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Sol? Go ahead, Ms. Sol.
Offhand, you happen to know how many families have taken advantage of the family grant to be members of the community center?
Oh, yeah, that's actually, I skipped that slide, sorry. So we've had 33 membership applications, 30 of them were redeemed this year, and then obviously Dolphin Fund, so it is, I kind of was remiss in mentioning that, but it is important to us that everyone have opportunity to participate in our programs, and while we didn't add any new scholarships in 2024, we are looking to expand that program in 2025.
Any other questions, Director Sol? Go ahead, Ms. Cosmo.
Yeah, I've got a question about that Hearts Across Merriam program. If I don't find a heart, is there a way to like purchase any of them? Like, is there an extra?
That's actually going to be, the marketing team is doing that, not the Parks Department, it's part of the 75th birthday, so that would be a question for Caitlin or Jenna.
All right.
But I don't know. I wish, because I thought the same thing today when I was looking at it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director Sol. Director Campke is coming to the podium.
Last but not least, I'm proud to talk to you about Public Works' accomplishments. We maintain the city's streets, fleet, stormwater, facilities, parks, and manage the CIP. So I've broken that down into four service areas that I will briefly talk to you about. The first is our maintenance, so city infrastructure. We've got a lot of statistics there. As you can see, we touch our infrastructure in a lot of different ways, cracked ceiling, asphalt, concrete, streetlights, sweeping streets. I noticed that I didn't list snow, but that's an important part of what we do, and this one's been a bad year, so we've got a lot of snow and a lot of cold, but hopefully, we're almost done. We mow and trim over 60 acres of state right-of-way and nine city parks, and then we issued 142 right-of-way permits this year, which would be any other utility that wants to come in and do construction in our right-of-way, then we issue a permit and monitor the construction. For fleet maintenance, we have a fleet superintendent and two, and one mechanic, and between the two of them, they maintain over 55 vehicles and 105 different types of equipment. And then I think that one thing that makes us very unique is our fleet superintendent also not only can maintain equipment, but he's really good at upfitting different types of vehicles, so he's done a lot of that work this year on police vehicles, Public Works, and the fire truck. And then he has also installed new in-car camera systems and 11 patrol vehicles. He always has something going on, so that's just a brief overview of all the things that they do in that, in that area. Facilities, we have a facilities superintendent and two maintenance workers, and they maintain five city vehicles in the parking structure, and that keeps them very busy. Two of the more notable projects would be the exterior improvement project, which we're really happy to have done, and they've begun work on the HVAC and building control upgrades project, which is almost completed, and that will make us more sustainable, save energy, and operate more efficiently. Our CIP, I definitely can't take credit for the Corps of Engineers, it takes all of us, community development and administration, but that's an ongoing project that we're working on coming up with a solution for. There's a number of projects we've completed this year, those are some of the highlights in the middle, and then on the right is just, we apply for external funding all the time. We did receive carbon reduction program grants this year for our streetlights. We were recently notified that we received $2.8 million in STP funds for 2027 for the Merriam Drive project, 55th to 50th Terrace, and of course, we always apply for SMAC and cars funding from Johnson County. So between those projects and our construction projects, which are sidewalks and signals and streetlights, we managed over 14 projects this year with a total project budget of over $19 million. As, we already talked about the underground utilities, but that's a big project going on right now, as you know, driving on Shawnee Mission Parkway, and our staff is continuing to put up our LED retrofit kits on residential and arterial streets, and then we're, we began design on the Shawnee Mission and I-35 PES and the 2025 street and drainage project, which will be bid probably coming up real soon in, in March. These are some of the programs that I think are really unique to Merriam that I don't know that a lot of cities do. We perform five citywide cleanup campaigns per year, we maintain 210 hanging baskets, we also maintain a butterfly garden and provide free milkweed seeds to the community as part of the mayor's monarch pledge. We also have a tree grant program that residents received 165 free trees planted by Heartland Tree Alliance, and then as community development, Brian Dyer mentioned that, we administered three neighborhood grant, island grant programs. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but first, I wanted to thank the council for your support on behalf of the city of Merriam staff. I wanted to thank the residents, and just looking at this program and this annual report, I'm really amazed and proud to be part of Tim Merriam as well as I know that everybody is, because we've done a lot this year. So happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. When do we anticipate the streetlight LED conversions will be completed? Is that?
We're kind of working it in, but... We're kind of working it in, but we should be done, I'm going to say, in the next two months or so.
Or two months.
Maybe earlier.
Because I had somebody ask me about, they saw a bright one and one that wasn't, and I, I made up an answer. I assumed that one had gotten burned out, and we replaced it with the LED, and it just wasn't the whole street done yet.
That's probably right. We try to do the whole street. I mean, we did complete all the arterial streets. Now we're in the neighborhoods, trying to get those done.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I have a comment, actually. I do think it's interesting that you forgot to put the snow removal on your slide, because I think that you all do a fantastic job with that. And I have a funny aside, which is, today I was driving to the office, and I was taking Schweitzer, and I noticed that on the Marion side, you could still see the pretreatment on the street, and on the other side, you couldn't, which is not the city of Marion. So, I mean, even when we don't have snow and your people aren't out there, you can tell that your pre-task planning for the snow events is still visible and, and is what helps us keep our streets clear and keep us safe.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions, Director Campke? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ingalls coming to the podium.
I don't have much to add to, really, what Celia summed it up with, which was really to say thank you to the council, but also thank you to the staff. You know, it's, it's a pleasure to be able to work and with a team of professionals and dedicated public servants that come to work every day to do the work that they do. It's a pleasure to be able to share that with you, to be able to share that with the public. This will be on our website. We will push this out so people can look at it for years to come and maybe compare year over year how, how great, or maybe not so great, we're doing in any given year. But it gives us something to shoot for, and it gives us an opportunity to share with all of our residents, all the good work that we do for them on their behalf, and it's our pleasure to do, because that's what we're here to do. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I will
Any questions?
See the floor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Thank all the staff. Looks like our next item up, this would be the March CIP update. Is that correct? Director Campke's coming forward again.
The March CIP update is in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the projects. I did want to mention that in the report, I mentioned that Millan Overlay was going to start in May, early June, but I was notified today that they want to start on April sixth and be done by the end of May. So, there's going to be a lot going on up in northeast Johnson County. We've got the Millan Overlay, Water One, it will be starting on Forty-Ninth Street, relocating Water Main, starting on March seventeenth. We've got AT&amp;T out there converting their copper to fiber. So, just a lot of going on up in that area. And Forty-Ninth should start in June or so. So, happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the projects.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
So, as you know, we have a lot going on in Ward One. I noticed a couple days ago that along the curb on the north side of Brown Park, there are white paint ticks, which I have a feeling has to do with that AT&amp;T thing. So, that was just beautifully re-asphalated last year. There's not going to be any tearing up of roads there?
Correct. They're boring on the side of the road.
Any other questions? Ms. Hans.
I was just curious how the Isma acquisitions are coming.
I think we have forty-two of sixty-nine. We went ahead and filed in court, and we'll continue to work with everybody. And I'm checking the mail every day to see if more come in, and then, you know, those will come off the list.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Campke. Looks like your Ms. Guard coming up for the single hauler update.
Hello, I think this is one of the last updates before we come back to the city council for some actual deliberation and consideration. I really don't have too much to give you all from the last time I gave you an update. I believe you all know that we received bids in. The work group has been working very hard. We've actually had two meetings. I really thought it would only take one, but we've had two meetings because we want to make sure that we get this right, to kind of deep dive into the bids, kind of ask questions, have some deliberation, and then actually go back to the haulers that responded to the bid to ask some follow-up questions and make sure that we have all the information that we need before we bring all of the information. Literally, I'm going to start from day one that we started having these conversations, and I'm going to go through every single really touch point that we've had on this topic. At our next city council meeting afterwards, we'll have a work session on this topic. So, March twenty-fourth, there'll be a work session. You will have every single piece of information you ever want to know about this topic, and we're going to have to have some conversations then to determine next steps. As you can see on, on the screen, this timeline hasn't changed. It potentially could, given our conversations on the twenty-fourth. But other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Guard? I see no questions. Thank you. Okay, informational items, Park and Recreation Advisory Board, their minutes were in our packet. Everybody okay with that? Have any questions for Director Slocum on that? Okay, looks like that's good. Okay, Mr. Ingall, do you have anything from staff?
Just as a reminder that we will have a special council meeting on the thirty-first. So, we will have one more regular Monday meeting, then we will have one the following Monday, where we will have a public hearing for the expansion of the I-35 district. Other than that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ingall?
Thank you.
I see no questions. Okay. Well, that pretty much takes us to the end. We have no executive session this evening.
No, sir.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hans.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Silver.
I second that.
Madam Clark.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.